I'm not going to bore you with a lot of stuff upcoming things, I actually just go ahead and look on our website and our calendar tell you what's coming up next few, next few weeks. We do have some good things coming. Please follow us on rumble, like us all this good stuff because it does, it hopefully one day will help us be able to continue doing these things. So the question is, why are we here tonight? And what happened was actually last week, we had a near identical type forum scheduled to do and actually most all but one candidate was unable to come or they did not come. And my comment was on that is that, you know, they chose not to come. There was apparently another, another forum going on, but you know, I actually got chewed out for saying that I, that people chose not to come. And there was one individual, Mr. Brandon Lee that we'd actually made a special thing for him to come last week because he couldn't come with on the eighth when all the rest of the others for seat two were, were going to be here. So he actually did commit for last week and it was a big thing there, but he chose not to come also because he had actually came and watched the forum that we had with the mayor and he didn't like the way we did it. He thought that it was, and I'm not going to read all this stuff, but he just didn't like it. So he decided he wasn't going to come. And I think to me that's, that's a bit problematic. So anyway, like I say, from that aspect, I did get a bit of pushback from those people that did not come. And so, okay, we'll try to do another one. Recognizing that this short notice and all this, I reached out to every candidate again and I called and texted. Okay, so Jim Freeman, Jim Francis, and Stephanie Taylor Thompson all got back with me and said, you know, they apologized, they would like to come and all this, but being this late in the and shorter notice and this late in the campaign season, they actually had some important meet and greets that they were had to go to. And to me, I understand, I've been a candidate, I've been there and this is the type of the season that you're really looking for people to help you get over that a little bit, not only in votes, but in funding. Running a campaign is very expensive. And so, you know, I was glad and I'm happy that they contacted me and it was good that they did and the conversations through texts and stuff went really well. So actually Stephanie and Jim Freeman and Jim Francis aren't able to to be here tonight. Now I have Brandon's up here because I have heard zero nothing for him, from him. And so my assumption is he's not coming. Again, from that perspective, I'd have to say that he chose not to notify me one way or the other. And so I have him set up here just in case he was going to come. I doubt that he will, but we do have a couple that did, that did come. And I'm going to ask you to come on up when I call your name. Jared Dominic, he's running for seat six, seat four. Okay. And I appreciate him coming. And then James Skinner. And he's running for seat six. Okay. Now some of us, you know, Jared was here last week, but James hasn't had much exposure. And I want you to look and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him a hard time here. I want you to look at him. Okay. He looks a little bit younger than me. Okay. He looks a little bit younger than Jared. Okay. And that's okay. Because I think it's absolutely fantastic that we have somebody of you know, his age, and I don't know what it is. How old are you? Twenty-three. Okay. He's just a baby. Okay. Actually taking interest in what's going on with the city, what's going on with politics and all of this. And so I think it's wonderful that he's able to come and I'm, and I'm grateful that we're able to give him this opportunity to tell us about himself and all that. But I'm not going to be the one running this show. I, Jolynn Thomas from K D knows radio 106.3 has been a very avid supporter of us and all that. And I had her scheduled to hopefully do this whole debate with everybody or this forum, it's not really a debate, but a forum for us. And so I'm going to actually turn it over to her and just let her run with this however she feels like she leads to. So let's give Jolynn a big hand.
All right. Well, thank you to all of you that are here. And we're going to start with opening statements. So let's go ahead and we'll start with Jared and then James.
Thank you. I'm Jared Dominic. I'm a candidate for seat four on city council. I'll just briefly go through our platform, which is unchanged from when we started our campaign. Basically, the pillars of our platform, our smart growth, we want to recapture, enhance the traditional small town atmosphere and feel of Idaho Falls. We want to, we believe that development should be in line with the citizens' wishes. We want to focus on affordable, single family starter homes with green spaces, yards and interconnectivity. We want to ensure that adequate infrastructure is in place and that those needs are meant prior to development taking place. And we want to avoid more overdevelopment, i.e. no more high density housing until we get some regular housing and get that ratio back into place. We want to put citizens first. That means local businesses and families, which have always been the backbone of our community, should be given the highest priority at city council, not a second tier place in the city. Common sense leadership. We think there should be more governance that is not focused on revenue generation and promoting growth. We need people managing our city that are putting the citizens and the small businesses and all businesses within our community first. We believe that they should be given priority by city council. We believe in a common sense leadership. There should be more governance. You know, like I said, not promoting growth, not looking just to create revenue sources from the citizens of the city, but looking at getting revenue from outside of the city and easing the the tension and the costs for the citizens of the city. We want to create open lines of communication between the citizens of the city and city hall. Right now, the city is good at pushing information out to people, but it's not good at receiving information from people or listening. There definitely seems to be some room for improvement there. I'll put it that way. We want to make informed, data-driven decisions that are best for the current citizens and businesses Idaho Falls. That is our goal and that's going to be our focus. So that's basically our platform and I have a lot of things to go into relative to growth and whatnot, but I'll wait till we get some questions and I'll go from there.
All right. Thank you, Jared and James.
Hello, hello. Awesome. Yeah. Hi. My name's James Skinner. I've lived here for almost 20 years of my life here in Idaho Falls. I'm going, I'm going to college, College of Eastern Idaho to be a cybersecurity analyst, hopefully one day. But you know, I've grown to love the city and the, in my community here. I feel like the best part of this community is how we work together to make positive changes and I want to be a part of that. I'm running for seat six because I'm wanting to help make Idaho Falls the best version of itself it can be. A lot of people right now are struggling, not just nationally, but right here at home. I understand that struggle because I'm living there too. I'm working to afford college, manage my car, take care of my health and like many others, I wouldn't be able to afford most of these new apartments being built today. I'm running to represent not just my generation, but the middle and working class families who are doing their best while feeling like the system works against them. I want to stand with the people, not above them, to listen, to act and to make sure our city government works for its residents, not for outside interests or big corporations.
All right. Well, thank you both for being here. I want to start just with a basic question. What was it that really prompted you to get in the race? So since we started with Jared on the first one, James, let's go with you.
Yeah, you know, um, I've always been told that, you know, if you really want to make change, you have to do it like start with yourself, you know? It's easy to just get upset and get angry at the world or you can, you know, decide, well, let's do something about it and and that's why I'm hoping to do here is by working with our community and hopefully making houses housing affordable now.
Jared?
Thank you. Yes. My wife and I, we moved here 15 years ago in about 2010. And we both moved here for work, chasing our careers. We were pregnant with our, our youngest son at the time. And we've lived here all that time and been part of the community and we've witnessed the changes that have been going on over the years that we've been here. And it really is being detracted from the atmosphere that it was when we moved here by the over preponderance of apartment buildings that are being built. The, the growth rate is not there to support the amount of buildings that are being built and it's really taking away from the traditional small town feel by, you know, it's going to eliminate opportunities for young people to get starter homes. If they're forced into buying apartments or renting apartments for $2,000 a month, they're not able to save to get that money to be able to get a down payment for a home. So we should be focusing on developing starter homes so that we don't turn into a rental economy. We can have more of an ownership economy where people are in the game and they have the opportunity to increase their own personal wealth and their own satisfaction by being homeowners. And so this change really is what prompted us to run for city council. We wanted to understand first of all, why this growth is happening? And what could be done to slow it down or reverse it? I mean, we're not anti-growth. There is going to be growth and growth is good for the economy, but it can be directed also. And we've discovered that as we've been researching it. The plan, the comprehensive plan, Imagine IF was approved by city council and it basically promotes high density housing through infill housing, middle housing, missing middle housing, developing multi-unit apartment buildings. So the focus of the plan is to increase population density. And so what they've done is they've updated all the codes in accordance with the plan to facilitate the building of all these apartment buildings and increase the population density. And those increases in population density are what's causing the significant traffic problems. Because we have an old infrastructure for the amount of homes that we have. Now we're sticking multiple apartment buildings in every nook and cranny of the city. And all, every one of those apartments has one or two cars. So we've got, you know, twice as many cars on the same old roads. So that's, you know, where the traffic's coming from. So anyway, it was all these changes to wrap it up that really caused us to want to run for office to see if we could reverse this trend of urbanization.
What do you believe is your greatest strength as a leader? And let's see, James, we'll start there.
Yeah. So I think what makes the strongest candidate is the amount of hard work you put in, you know? And I'm committed to making 110% of hard work and possibly more to make sure that we put our families first. And yeah, another thing at hard work is integrity and communication. You know, I think right now a lot of people are frustrated with just the lack of communication and are wanting to get involved with our city council, but they seem to be talking over people than rather than talking directly with people. And I think those are what make a strong candidate.
And Jared, same question?
Thank you. Yes. I think my experience is I'm a former marine and I've been working with government within DOE as a radiation health physicist for about 30 years on various technical projects. I'm very analytical, very data-driven, very logical in my approach. So I utilize those strengths to analyze things before I make a decision. I want to solicit input from everybody that's willing to listen. I want to, you know, we're willing to talk and share their ideas. I believe good ideas can come from anywhere. So I want to hear what everybody has to say. I want to hear what, you know, data is available, look at that and make the best logical data-driven decision possible, one that's going to be best for the citizens Idaho Falls and for the businesses Idaho Falls. And so I think that I have some leadership skills and a lot of analytical skills that play into this position. And most of all, I have a deep love for the community. I've raised my family here. My, my other kids and grandkids were born here. My grandkids were born here. My other kids have since relocated to be here with us. So I mean, we're deeply rooted in the community and we really love what the community has provided for us over our years here. And we just want to see that continue, that small town feel and that, you know, that caring community versus just a urban environment that's being created by our current city council right now.
All right. Anybody have any questions before we dive in to some of the bigger issues? I wanted to just kind of give you a chance to get to know these candidates. Anybody have anything if you want to come up to the microphone?
First, I want to thank you for running and caring enough to volunteer to help your community. If you win, it's going to take a lot. So appreciate that. Jared, I have a question for you. You mentioned that you wanted to emphasize backyards, green spaces and connectivity. What did you mean by, I personally think we have too many parks. They're, they're really expensive to maintain and this city has tons and tons of parks, but connectivity, what do you, what exactly do you mean by, by that when you say that?
Sure. Exactly. Um, there's a, right now there's a push within parks and recreation to create bike paths and trails that are bike and pedestrian paths only that connect the different parks and different green spaces and neighborhoods throughout the city. Going forward, as far as development goes, I would like to see us move back to a traditional neighborhoods, which would include parks and, you know, taking into consideration bike and pedestrian only paths that new developments would have to put those in. And then eventually as the developments worked out, they would all be interconnected so that you could walk or ride your bike on pedestrian and bike only paths away from the traffic into town. So you could get to all the amenities or go to the different parks without having to co-mingle bikes and pedestrians with traffic. And also, so that's what I mean by connectivity as far as that goes. I do like the river walk. I do like, I do like a lot of the parks. I agree. We have a substantial number of parks. And I know that, you know, Lisa's talked a lot about how many acres we got to mow and whatnot. So that is a pretty big expense. But I think that, you know, parks are integral to having traditional neighborhoods, which is the direction that I feel we should go as opposed to multi-unit buildings. I mean, there is a place for multi-unit buildings. But the fact is, the population of Idaho Falls has only grown by 1.7% over the last four years from 21 to 24. And the county, surrounding counties only grown by 1.8% as far as the number of people coming here. And those numbers, that's like 1,500 people a year are coming to Idaho Falls. But yet we've built thousands of apartments. We've built, you know, we built about three to four housings for every family that's moving to Idaho Falls. So at that, at our current growth rate, it's going to take us three or four years to be able to fill those apartments up. So I think we have enough for now. The ratio of single family homes to apartments has really gotten way out of whack. This is the chart that, that shows that out of the 6,000 multi-unit buildings that are three to 20 apartments each that are in Idaho Falls total as of 2024, 43% of them were built from 21 to 24. So almost half the apartment buildings in Idaho Falls altogether were built over that last four-year timeframe. So did that answer your question on connectivity, even though I threw some extra stuff in?
Yeah, to, to a degree. What about when we build, we changed the way we built neighborhoods after World War II. So if you go to the numbered streets, you'll see everything's on a grid. But after World War II, they started building cul-de-sac neighborhoods where you had to drive because there was no direct path. And I've noticed that some of the neighborhoods, they have put pathways through cul-de-sacs. So you could ride a bike or walk there. Would that include requiring that in new neighborhoods so that you don't have to walk clear around three blocks to get to where you want to go? And just say, hey, you know, instead of taking somebody's yard, we set this land aside when we build the neighborhood for specifically doing that?
Yes, that's, that's what I would propose. That's exactly what I would propose. I agree that there's been a shift in the way neighborhoods were built. We live on Fifth Street, so I'm very familiar with that type of setup. We also, in our canvassing, we've walked throughout the community and seen a lot of neat neighborhoods, a lot of things that we didn't know were in Idaho Falls, just because we, you know, walked, you know, 50 miles probably over the last couple of weeks. But yes, I would propose that we put that in that some of the developments they have, they call, they have what's called planned unit developments. That's a method that they've incorporated into Title 11 of the of the city code, which talks about, which allows communities to be developed, you know, generally over two acres. And they're developed and they can circumnavigate, well, I wouldn't know about circumnavigate, but they get abbreviated approval so that they can get approved more fat, more quickly without having to strictly comply to the existing codes. It's kind of a workaround that city council can approve. And, and these PUDs are largely these multi-unit structures that are being built and they've all been approved by city council to date. I haven't heard of any being turned down. And part of the PUD process is amenities. There's a requirement to have amenities in there. So we could require that, you know, they have parks within those communities and we could also require that they put those interconnected bike paths in when they're developing the community. So like you said, we wouldn't have to rip out somebody's yard or something to create that, but all the new communities we develop would incorporate those paths and those parks. And those paths and parks would be paid for by the developers when that land was developed. So, you know, there there could be questions on the maintenance, but it seems to me since they're all under CCRs and they're all controlled that, you know, those developments, the communities could pay for maintenance of those parks. Also, the spaces within those communities within the PUDs are all required to have stormwater retention basins, which are basically just open pits that, you know, if there's a rainstorm, it collects the water. Well, all of those could be utilized to, to make a park out of and the bike path could go right through there. They're required to have them. Why just have them filled up with rock that nobody can use? I mean, you can make a usable space out of that. So that's what I would propose.
All right. Thank you. Did you have a question?
So be for both of you. As you mentioned, Lisa throws out how many acres and it's 500 acres, which used to be in the past that the city would hire high school kids and that to maintain it. Now they are contracting it out, which I imagine is a more expense than maintaining our own equipment and hiring kids. But the other thing is we really don't have a swimming pool. I mean, you look at Rexburg, they've got a nice swimming pool. They've got a lazy river. You go to Pocatello, they have the same. Instead of building new parks, why don't we utilize, and get your thoughts on this, there's a big lot out in front of Toppes Park. Why don't we put a nice swimming pool in there, a nice lazy river, so the kids can have a place to go? And I think most of our parks in city Idaho Falls are not being utilized, but maybe 10%.
Go ahead. Let's let James go right ahead on this one.
Yeah, um, I do agree with that. I think we should definitely be more invested into having people who live here already have a, especially for our kids to live in a in a better, better life. And while I haven't done much research about like our parks and utility, I do 100% agree that we should definitely again, be more invested into more swimming pools, more, more stuff for our children or people to do here.
Same question?
Yep. I agree. I think that a water park's a great idea. I'm not sure about, you know, how all the funding would work and whatnot to be able to achieve that goal, but I think that certainly should be evaluated as something that should be looked at. And I think that, you know, taking care of the kids in the community should be a primary objective of city council and city government is we should be taking care of our families and taking care of our kids and make sure they have places to go and be entertained, you know, that are safe and they're, you know, creative and get them more engaged in physical activity instead of being on their phones all the time. I mean, I know that's a struggle we have with our youngest son constantly. And if there is a place he could go out and, and recreate, I think that, you know, get him outside, that's good.
I would love to talk a little bit about some of the generation gap that exists. So specifically for you, James, what is your generation most concerned about? And how can we help bridge some of those gaps?
Excellent question. So based on what I've been like hearing from like social media and just in my generation wise, it's just the fear of not be able to, for not just like a single family home, but apartments in general, general right now are just highly expensive. And just, you know, the job like for like job, even if we graduate after college, you know, the market is so tough right now that many, many students right now who graduate are struggling to find a job. And while that's a difficult thing to control, I think if we work with our local businesses a lot more better and work with fair wages and help these local businesses grow, I think that's a great start. And I think finding ways finding smart influential ways to help bring the costs of, of apartments, housing down a lot more than you know, it's like what Jared said, you know, we are growing, but you know, we can definitely control this growth. It's not too intense. But and if we keep building too many apartments, then that's just going to increase the utility costs of like sewers, electricity, and I think that'll cost inflation more. So but yeah, I would say that just job opportunity and housing is a difficult thing for my generation.
And Jared, you remember a time when we didn't have to compete with the device and social media. How do you think we can get back to bringing people together, bringing generations together and having some of those gatherings and those conversations that once upon a time were a lot more common than they are right now?
That's excellent question. I think that there's opportunity, especially even utilizing our parks. I think if we can work towards community gatherings and community-based organizations that incorporate families and, and get them more involved, including the parks, like the water park is a great idea. If we can, you know, have those types of facilities and have community activities that encourage family participation, I think that we can get you know, multiple generations out there. Now having two grandkids of my own, which is hard to believe. You know, I definitely appreciate that a lot more and, and want places that I can go and take them and do things as a family. You know, with other community members and other families, you know, that's, that's important.
Well, no doubt, the cost of living is something that people are really feeling. And so that brings us to the point of business. What can we do to be really supportive in Idaho Falls so that we're not losing opportunities for good paying jobs to other communities where perhaps there's less red tape and it's easier to get something started? What ideas do you have for supporting local business and being inviting and welcoming to other businesses who may want to come in?
Yeah. So I think the goal would be to work alongside them, not against them. So the permit, the permitting delays are hurting small businesses and job growth. I think what we need to do right now is we need clear timelines, online applications and real person I think what we need to do right now is we need clear timelines, um, online applications and real person. Real, real people at city hall who can answer questions directly with these people who are starting new businesses. Um, the city also has the ability to communicate honestly about delays and helping to set a good timeframe for them. Um, whether it's for, from growth, infrastructure or staffing, so residents and business owners aren't left in the dark. So, clear communication.
Go ahead, Jared?
Um, thank you. I think primarily I'd like to focus on our existing local businesses. And, and see if there's ways that we can uh, promote their utilization, you know, by, with the city. Um, and you know, promote development of those local businesses. Um, I also think that there could be things that could be done. I know there have been issues, you know, especially in historic downtown. With respect to renovation and, and getting uh, businesses uh, you know, up and running or refurbishing old buildings for utilization. Um, I think that uh, unfortunately with the international codes that have now being, are now being introduced within to our city code. Um, it, it's pretty rigid as far as redevelopment or um, you know, restoring historic buildings or older buildings and reutilizing them. I think that we should be able to come up with a way um, to ease the requirements for refurbishing buildings. So that that can be done more cost effectively and more over a shorter timeframe. So that those people can get those businesses up and running. I also think we need to encourage new business into the community um, to create more jobs. Because that's one way to increase housing affordability is to increase the number of jobs and increase the wages of the people that are working. If people are making more money, then houses are by definition more affordable, even if they're still relatively expensive. As far as uh, growing our own businesses, I mean, I think it is important, especially within, you know, a lot of constructions going on right now. And a lot of those construction companies are from out of state. There are people coming in. I think we should be focused on getting those construction jobs um, from businesses within our community. Our own contractors should be working to develop these uh, lots and create these um, you know, these buildings. Whether they're single-family residences or multifamily residences or, you know, businesses. We should be working to get our local contractors working on those. And there should be a mechanism. I realize that with city bidding and whatnot, it's all low bid type of scenario. But there should be a mechanism that we can prioritize um, local businesses to facilitate their use. Um, also, I think we need to work towards enhancing um, you know, trades and crafts and apprenticeships. So that we can grow some of our own um, workforce from within our own community. So we should be working with the community colleges and the, the local contractors to develop apprenticeship programs and training programs. So that we can get young people involved in the trades, because you can have a very excellent job doing that. You can make a lot of money. Um, and that would also promote, because a lot of people that learn those trades and those skills will go on to create their own business and do that themselves. Um, to support our community. So those are all things I'd like to do to support our community.
One of the other things we've heard a lot about is the lack of cooperation between Idaho Falls. And Ammon and surrounding communities. What ideas specifically do you have for enhancing that spirit of cooperation? Between surrounding communities?
Yeah, so right now, residents only get three minutes to speak at the city council meetings, I believe. And only on topics um, already on the agenda and what they approve of. That's not, that's not real public input. People, I, I believe that people deserve more than a timer and a limited list of what they wanna talk about. We, we need open forums where anyone can speak. Quarterly da- town halls across the city and online ways to ask questions or share concerns. Um, the council should answer residents, not just shut them down for a question they don't happen to like. Basically, if we want people to trust our city council and our government, we need to actually communicate with them and be honest with them. Is what I believe, and take criticisms and, yeah.
Thank you, and Jared?
Yes, well, I'll, I'll start before I get into the, across the communities. Um, I'll talk about uh, within just the city of Idaho Falls. I, I, I agree, there's a big. A chasm there in communication, and I think that that can be corrected um, through several avenues that uh, that we would propose. One would be to have quarterly forums where um, the mayor and all the city council members. And the, the heads of the departments would be there and all, it would be open to the public. And they could all come and they could ask any question that they wanted and we could all respond there real time. I mean, I, I think a, a critical part of being, certainly being a, a council member or the mayor. Is you need to have that open lines of communication and you need to listen to the input of the citizens. I mean, that's why we're, we're putting in for this job is to do what the citizens want, not what we want to do independently, regardless of what the citizens want. Which seems to be what's happening in some cases now. Um, so I would open up that communication within the city. We'd also establish, work to establish a hotline where anybody could call in, any citizen could call in with any question. Um, and that would be answered in a timely fashion, um, you know, through a central forum, both through the phone and through social media. And any other aspect. And then all that history would be saved online. So that every citizen could look at the questions that have been asked and the answers that were given. And then that, that way they can see what kind of consistency the city's having and whether, you know, whether there's a cohesive structure. On how, how that's all be, working. Um, getting to interrelation between communities, I mean, there's definitely room for improvement. Um, working with the, you know, the cities close to us, Ammon, Yukon, um, you know, those. Iona, um, don't wanna leave anybody out. Um, so we need to work together and, and I think that we can have those same type of forums. I know we do have different committees and different working groups that, that there are some levels of communication already in place. Um, I think we should work to, to make those more active. Um, and get that communication more open and also make that, that, those interactions more available to the public. So that everybody knows what we're working on actually, as opposed to everybody just off doing their thing. And nobody really knows what's going on type of thing. That's what I propose.
Alright, thank you. Uh, before I ask another question, I wanna just again remind you, if any of you have a question. Please, by all means, feel free to come up. Um, you are welcome to ask questions.
This one is kind of for both of you, but, and I, I, first of all, James, I'm so excited. To see youth wanting to get involved. I can't imagine how you're gonna do it, trying to go to school and the other work. Obviously, you have job. So, that concerns me a little bit. That, cuz that's a tough road to hoe when you're trying to work and go to school and be involved in politics. But I'm really excited for you. My concern is with the annexation of the outlined communities. And you think you're moving out to the country. And pretty soon, the city is moving out and going, oh no, no, you get to be part of Idaho Falls now. Which in some ways is good, but in some ways, you know, you're paying city property taxes. You're, it involves a lot of other things. Is, uh, and I don't know whether the city council has anything to do with the annexation of property or not. I may be way off on the wrong track there, but, and the other thing is, I worry about. Telling the developer, yeah, you have to have a quarter acre park for your four-story. Thousand home apartments. We know who's gonna end up paying for that. It's gonna be the poor residents. And the two thousand dollar rent per month is gonna end up twelve to twenty-one hundred. You know, within a very short time. So, I, I, I'm not sure how that works out either, so. What can you tell me?
Um, sure, um. This, it's, it's interesting, I'm, as I'm learning, you know, we've met with all the department heads and we've, we've learned a lot about the way the city works. Um, and, and the annexation results in an increased tax base for the city. And I, and I believe that's why sometimes they pursue annexation. Um, another way that comes about is um, through development. Um, you know, large lot owners or property owners that are in the county, but you know, the islands that are out there. Um, may decide that they wanna develop. And so in order to develop that lot, then they'll choose to be annexed into the city. To receive the benefits of the city and be able to access the city. City utilities. Um, okay, that's better, sorry. Access the utilities, um. As far as uh, so, you know, that's kind of the reason behind annexation. Um, and I'm not sure exactly what level of involvement city council has in that. I'm, I'm sure that's a factor because city council is very powerful. Um, they basically can enact anything, any, any code and any rule that they want. Within state and federal law. All it takes is a majority of city council and that can become part of the city code. And then presto, it's a law that all the citizens have to comply with. So, city council has a lot of power. And the other question relative to um, the apartment buildings and the parks. Um, right now, the PUD process requires amenities. So the developers are already required, when they go through the PUD process, to provide amenities. A lot of those amenities come in the form of a basketball court or a pickleball court, um, or a park. Um, and, and those are requirements that are part of the um, PUD process. And uh, you know, it's interesting as we've been researching it, why we're getting all this high-density development. And we've looked at a lot of the PUDs that are, that have been developed. And city council has actually had their fingers directly in those and has, has actually chosen um, which amenities go in there. They might say, oh, we don't want a basketball court, we want a pickleball court or something along those lines, you know, so they. City council approves every single PUD. So if it's developed through that process, it has to be approved by city council. And so they're already paying for amenities. So what, you know, how much that affects the rent, I'm not sure. But it's just, we could request them to do a different amenity. Instead of putting in a basketball court, they could put in a park and a, and a bike path. For example. And I think that that could be tied to, you know, they're all run under CCRs. Um, CCRs, so that there's fees, those fees are collected probably in addition to the rent. Or if you buy them as a townhome, then you, that's a bonus fee that you get when you buy it under CCRs. Um, so I mean, tho- those fees are already collected, so that it seems like that could be a mechanism to pay for the maintenance of those. Um, parks and bike paths.
Yeah, um, so for your first question, um, yes, so what I would do is um, I would definitely, if elected, I would pri- prioritize. I'm going to city, working for the city. So yeah, I would have to definitely cut my part-time job, which I'm willing to do. And uh, and then yep, I would do part-time for college. And again, I'm willing to do because I, this is definitely something I wanted to do for a major part of my life, is make a change in my community. Yeah, and then for annexation, I haven't done much research on that. Um, it would definitely, and like what you said, you know, sometimes it can be good and beneficial towards the community. But that's the big key there. I, I mean, if it's just for, to build more luxury apartments. That can just bring up the property values and which you guys have to pay for. I don't think that's fair to you guys, and I think we would need to re, we would have to work on what we can do with, during those situations.
We've heard a lot about transportation throughout this campaign cycle. A lot of people talking about traffic and the need for transportation. What are your ideas and thoughts on dealing with traffic and transportation?
I can start off if you.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, well, I think uh, you know, the traffic, I, I, I'll have to clarify the question as we go along a little bit. But from the traffic aspect, um, I think that there's definitely opportunities to make some quick improvements. Um, one example I can think of is reducing the amount of high-density housing that's being put in. The infill development and the missing middle housing. But because each one of those apartments is adding cars within the city limits. In the areas that are already constricted as far as traffic flow goes. So if we, if we reduce the density that we're putting in, that will reduce the number of cars that are on the road in those areas that are already. Impacted most heavily by the traffic. Another area that we could look at is uh, like Holmes Avenue, and I know there's several others. That used to be four lanes that were relatively recently um, reduced to two lanes, so that a bike path could be added. Um, well, you just cut down the number of cars that can go down Holmes by a factor of two. So that greatly um, you know, increases the bottleneck and, and reduces the traffic flow. So I think we should look at the streets that we have and how we can maximize the traffic flow through the streets we have. Um, would be a good approach to um, addressing the traffic issue. Um, relative to transportation, were you referring to public transportation?
Right.
Okay, um, with respect to public transportation, um, I actually have uh, some insights into that. Cuz uh, my oldest son has autism, so we use, um, he uses medical transportation. So that's funded by medical. Um, but that transportation is provided by local vendors. There's local companies that provide that transportation, medical transportation, for him to go work at DWI where he works every day. Um, and also to take him journeys where he stays and, and do his therapy sessions. And that's provided by local transportation companies. So when it comes to public transport, and I agree, there's a need for it. Um, I, I do think the gift is very expensive. It is largely federally funded. That is tax dollars, even though it might not be all our tax dollars that's paying for that. Um, but it is largely federal funded, and I think that those thirty dollars per ride um, is, is pretty high. I mean, we could practically buy everybody an Uber ride that wanted one for that much money. Um, and I think a better approach would be to look at growing businesses within our community. We could put it out to bid, and I'm sure that there are local companies that provide, currently provide transportation. That would be willing to do rides, especially within city limits. It's a short ride for them, and they're doing it already. Um, for a fixed rate fee. So we could look at getting local companies online that would provide those rides for anybody that wanted it. And it would be just a flat rate. They just bid a flat rate and we could, as a city, we could just pay for it. And I think it'd be cheaper than what we're paying now.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that, uh, with that idea. Um, I would also like to add on that I would, we would have to work first with the Idaho Transportation Department and county planners. Um, I would say the city needs to improve the traffic light timing to keep vehicles moving smoothly during rush hours. Um, add more turn lanes and roundabouts at busy intersections is a start, I would say. Long term, I feel like if we're going to build more housing businesses, it needs to be a way that doesn't overwhelm like smaller roads. In a way, and that's where we would have to work with like Idaho Transportation Department, see what we can do there and hoping to improve traffic flow.
One of the other things I've heard a lot about is people frustrated with the condition of some sidewalks in neighborhoods. Makes it difficult for people to push a baby stroller or roller blade or just enjoy those sidewalks. What needs to be done in your mind to make sure that someone is accountable for those repairs? Do you wanna go ahead, Jared?
Sure. Um, yes, again, living on Fifth Street, I'm very familiar with the condition of the sidewalks in a lot of the older part of town. Um, my son had his first bike wipeout on one, as a matter of fact. But uh, i- i- it's, it's an interesting area. I know we do have a curb and gutter program. Where you can go in and homeowners can volunteer to go in, property owners can go in and they'll pay for it. And the city currently picks up fifty percent of the tab for replacing sidewalks and gutters. But, you know, the sidewalks are own, or the responsibility of the homeowners. Um, that's the, that's the, kind of the way it is. Um, and I know we do have that curb and gutter program. I actually have an idea for a different program that has pros and cons, and I'm sure I might, you know, some sectors will flame me for it. And I'm sure I might, you know, some sectors will flame me for it. But I think that we could have a voluntary program and we could replace those sidewalks. And then that would be paid for initially 100% instead of 50% by the city. But then we fit, we could backcharge that 50%. We could just put it as a lien on the property so that the property owner wouldn't have to pay any cash out of pocket, but it would just, the cost of that could be put on, you know, like put onto their mortgage. It basically would just be put on as a, as a lien against their property. So whenever it was sold or transferred, the city would recoup that money. And, and maybe it would never get sold or transferred, but at least the sidewalk would be fixed and the city's already paying for half of it anyway. So just deferring the recovery of that cost for the other 50% doesn't seem like too big of a stretch.
Yeah, absolutely agree with that. I would say that when it comes to our sidewalks and our gutters is a service and a need for the people. And I think we should definitely put a lot more funding towards that to all many streets. And yeah, I haven't done much research, research on it, but I would say I definitely agree with Jared's point on there.
All right, a lot of talk as we know about growth. And one of the things that I'm hearing from a lot of people is that they're concerned and we've talked about it a little bit, that this growth is going to change the identity of Idaho Falls and the way that we interact. What are your ideas for strategic growth that will allow us to maintain that identity and that life that we've come to know and love?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start. I think that we need to get back to our more family-oriented values. And I think we need to not try and promote a rental economy. We need to promote an ownership economy. So we need to be working to develop neighborhoods, traditional neighborhoods with reasonably affordable housing. And I think that could be achieved in several different ways. I mean, looking at smaller homes, looking at bungalows, starter homes, even prefabricated or modular homes, it could be pre-permitted and pre-approved based on their designs and preferably built locally. So they could be pre-constructed in a lot somewhere. Um, or modulars construction where the panels are all pre-manufactured. I mean, there's a lot of engineering solutions out there that are currently available. So we could develop that homegrown resource to be able to build those locally. And then we could have them pre-approved. And so we could build neighborhoods of small starter homes so that young families or young couples or young individuals could afford to purchase a house at a very reasonable cost if we're just producing them quickly and, you know, and getting them in place. And then that allows people to get into the home ownership game and to start building equity, to start building generational wealth. And as time goes by, those values will go up and they'll be able to sell it and they'll be able to buy a larger home. I mean, that's how I did it. I, I did it with the sweat equity, you know? My dad bought me, helped me buy my first house. I basically had to rebuild the whole thing. And every house I've owned, I've gone and put that sweat equity into it and built up that equity and gotten better and better homes as time goes by. We just have to get people in the game as soon as we can. So traditional neighborhoods with affordable homes, starter homes that get people in the ownership cycle.
Yeah, so, um, I think part of growth is part of making sure Idaho is affordable to live. My approach focuses on support and development that truly serves Idaho Falls families, creating starter homes, duplexes and safe affordable apartments, not just luxury complexes that locals can afford. Before approving major expansions, we must, we must ensure our infrastructure can handle growth, roads, sewers, schools, water and public safety. Unchecked growth can raise costs and taxes for everyone. We should work directly with developers and builders to find practical ways to make housing more affordable. Another key part of the solution is raised, uh, raising household earning power by investing in workforce development, partnering with community colleges and trade schools for job training. This goes with the growth. Um, and supporting small businesses that provide good-paying local jobs, I would say will help with affordability and help our city grow.
Anybody else have a question they would like to ask?
So you're, um, trying to address the traffic problems. And again, I think we can go to the past to a degree. If you look at, um, a little roundabout at Boulevard and Elm Street, there's a small commercial district there in amongst the neighborhood. That's the way we used to do things back in the 30s and 40s. Neighborhoods had little convenience stores right in the neighborhood. I used to walk down to them in my grandpa's house. And if we had that kind of thing, if we mix light commercial with residential, then I don't have to get in my car and drive to Costco. I can walk to the end of my block and get my haircut or get a gallon of milk. And that could reduce a lot of traffic flow if we go back to the way we did things before World War II and we allowed, I mean, obviously we don't want, you know, a smelter in the neighborhood, but light commercial, if we went back to the way we did it before, people didn't have cars in those days. And so we didn't put everything way out at Costco where you have to drive clear across town to get to your nearest. In addition to that, it's businesses like Costco that often get unfair tax advantages to come here and the city builds infrastructure for them that we all pay for. And then they put all of our mom and pop businesses out of business. So I'd like to know what your thoughts are on those kinds of things. And then, um, one other, just a suggestion, I really hate mowing grass, especially that strip that's like between the sidewalk and the, I don't think anybody likes mowing that. So if we, rather than taking up lanes on the road to put bike trails, if we, whenever we had to repair that sidewalk, we got rid of that strip of grass and made it an eight-foot wide multi-use pathway that wasn't on the road with the cars. We could get those extra lanes back for the cars. Then the homeowner doesn't have to mow that grass and we now have a multi-use pathway. So that's just, just something to consider. But what are your thoughts on allowing light commercial with residential? So we don't have to get any car and drive clear to Sam's Club or Home Depot?
Okay, yeah, no, I, I think that's the way it used to be and there's still some situations like that. You know, you still see a lot of residents that have businesses in there, you know, like upholstery shops or even jewelry shops or those places that, um, you know, primarily on First Street or a lot of the older neighborhoods used to allow that commercial use within their, um, you know, certainly for like art studios and things like that, you know? I mean, that used to be more prevalent. I'm not, I think they've kind of restricted that a lot more. I'd have to go back and look at the codes and see. It used to be a lot more open to allow that type of activity to happen. I, I don't think the codes allow that anymore because they've adopted, you know, the international codes and the, you know, with the 15-minute walking cities and all that, you know? So it's not a, it doesn't seem like it's been a priority for city council. I agree with it. And I think, you know, this is, this is kind of an off-the-cuff idea, but I think, you know, we have all the alleys. I think that the alleys in the older part of town could be reconditioned and utilized, you know, for either pedestrian and bike pathways as well, or even have small businesses that catered into those alleys. So you could have mom, pa shop so that you could have like a, a walking, you know, a walking, you know, shop thing down the alleys, you know? And it would also repair the alleys, which are in pretty bad disrepair in a lot of part of town, in a large part of town. As far as the mowing strip, I'm, I'm not sure on that strip on the side of the road. One thing I do like that those strips are used for now is, is trees, you know, like in the old part of town where we live, there's a lot of really mature trees, which are really nice and provide good shade. I know a lot of that, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure about removing them to put in, you know, multi-use pathways, but I think it's a good idea and I would certainly explore it. I personally would prefer trees, but that's just me.
Yeah, so I mean, I haven't done much research about the commercial wise, but I would definitely say we need to start by zoning our buildings more better and just where we're building them so it's more convenient for people where they need to go. And yeah, I think just billing more, more strategically is, would be the best answer I have for that.
We've talked a lot about affordability and cost of living. A lot of our local businesses are competing with Amazon and Wayfair and the convenience of that. What can we do to get people to come and support our local businesses?
Yeah, so I think a good example of that is our farmer's market here where we help a lot of farmers out. And I think that's a great way so they're not just having to compete with huge like places like Albertson's or Costco. I would, I would definitely say that socially, I think we can start creating more, more events for local businesses so they can, um, have a chance to be able to sell whatever products they would need to sell. And hopefully that would definitely grow their business and stuff, just promote them more, a lot more.
I think, uh, I think there's a lot, a lot of things that we can do, actually. I think, uh, you know, the activities like the farmer's market downtown that bring people downtown definitely helps support the downtown businesses. I think that we can look at encouraging those types of activities to try and increase the, the flow of people in, into the, into the city itself to try and increase the number of people that are there. I'm not sure what kind of incentive programs or, or things that could be put together. It wouldn't be like a, a tax-type incentive, but an incentive to get people to shop local, how you could encourage that, um, movement. I mean, basically it's, that's part of the hometown feel is you want to support your local community, your local businesses, keep your money here, you know, kind of encourage that type of atmosphere. One thing that we could do downtown is kind of work to resolve the parking problem. I know that's been a very contentious issue. If there was more parking down there, um, then that would allow more people to get down there more easily. And I think that there's ways that we could look at that. I know they've studied parking structures at different times and I know the current cost of structures is very expensive, but I think there are some creative ways that we could look at addressing that parking situation downtown a little bit better. Another thing to help promote local businesses would not be putting in a sales tax, which is something that is on the, on the table right now, that they're trying to put in a local sales tax. And I don't think that that's going to help local businesses because that's just going to increase the cost for people to do business locally. So we should not do a local sales tax, in my opinion.
Anybody else have a question? Come on up.
Somebody said alley a while ago, and that's one of my hotspots. In my neighborhood, we have alleys. We've had dumpsters on the alleys forever. We have all kept our alleys neat and pretty much weed-free. A lot of people even planting pretty flowers back there and everything. The city decided this past year to take our, our dumpsters away. And they, without, all of us neighbors, I mean, I've got one here, we all fussed with the city. Oh, well, the, the, uh, plastic dumpsters, uh, trash cans we're going to provide for you are actually going to be a whole lot cheaper. And if they get destroyed, you just call the city and you get another one. And, um, we're all fussing about that because the dumpsters were so handy, we could go back there at any time and take our trash bag instead of hauling a trash can out at a certain time and the wind blowing it all over the place. And so my question is, I guess, on my two street, my two-block street with the alleys on either side of my street, there were a total of six dumpsters. So the city having to pick up trash out of six dumpsters. Now there's 44 trash cans on the street. And one of the first times that they came by picking up the trash cans, the city truck was dripping hydraulic fluid all over the street. How is it more beneficial for the city to stop for 44 trash cans than for six dumpsters? So would you guys be looking into the, because, and I've heard that they're planning to take away all of the dumpsters out of all of the alleys in the city? What would you guys do about that?
Um, well, I live down, like I said, again, on Fifth Street. So we're, we, we have a dumpster, which I actually, I had, I've had mixed feelings about it, but I actually do like it now. I mean, because it's, it is more convenient, um, other than when they come bang into unload it, you know, when they do. But, um, I don't know the answer specifically to the question, but I will find out the answer to that question because, um, I don't know if they're planning on removing these, the remaining dumpsters. I do know that, you know, some alleys that used to have them no longer do. Um, I'm not sure what street it was cut off on. I mean, I know all the ones closer to town, they still have the dumpsters, but I think after, I don't know if it's Holmes or, or which one, which street it is, but once you get past that, even though they still have alleys, they're, they've all gone to the, the cans. I know that because my daughter and son-in-law live on Ninth Street over there and they have the, the cans too. Um, it doesn't seem as though 44 cans would be more efficient than six dumpsters. So I'll, I'll look into it. I'm curious myself.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I, I'm not really sure why they would make life harder for the neighbors. I would, I assume, I assume, I feel like they should just have like an option, you know, like if people find it more convenient just having a dumpster there, I think they should, I feel like people should have the right to have a dumpster that's convenient to them. I mean, if they want a trash can, then they can do it there. But I feel like we should have dumpsters in neighborhoods because I, yeah.
Any other questions from the audience? Yes, come on up, please.
Uh, this question is specifically for James. Um, I don't know if you remember all yours responses to the East Idaho News articles that, um, you gave, but you said that one thing that you're looking at expanding in Idaho Falls is transit with, um, more taxis and buses. My question for you is what's wrong with gift?
Well, I, while I haven't done much information about gift, um, I've been told that just transportation-wise, you know, people, um, you know, are looking for more ways to have cheaper costs of just transporting to where they need to go, like local businesses, you know? And I guess that's where I meant more. Like I said, I don't have much of a direct answer to that, but I'll, I'll do more research on that and let you know as soon as possible.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so for parking downtown, um, I ride bikes from time to time. There's very little bike parking downtown. Um, I think there's a couple of, a couple of racks really limited just outside of the bakery downtown, the Great Harvest Bakery, but that's about all I've seen. There may be others that I'm not aware of, but I don't see why we couldn't get the Community College or the VOTech Vocational Welding in High Schools to, or maybe some, the Lions Club or the Elks or some community service organization to build bikes because you can park 12 or 15 bikes in the space of one car. So, uh, at least in the summertime, that could alleviate that if we took some of the alley spaces or whatnot and put racks in there so you have a place to lock your bike. So it's just, it's just something to think about, a suggestion more than a question.
I think it's a great suggestion, um, especially if it incorporates utilizing, uh, you know, people that are in our community and can do that. You know, I mean, especially if it's training and working with the Vocational Technical Institute, um, you know, getting, getting those guys doing work hands-on. I think that, you know, there are a lot of, of artistic things down there as well, benches and whatnot. So I think the art, art, artist community might be interested in getting involved in that, you know? I mean, there's a lot of crossover, I mean, a lot of metalwork is, is really artistry. So I mean, I think you find a lot of people. So I mean, I think you find a lot of people that would be interested in doing that. And I think there are certainly places that could, they could be installed. Why they haven't done it, I'm not sure. I mean, especially with the, the big push for having more bike paths and whatnot. It seems like they'd want to accommodate places to put the bikes, you know? Especially if there's a lot of parking lots that aren't very heavily utilized that, you know, could stand to have a couple of bike racks in them, from my perspective anyway.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. Um, I would say definitely have them like people who uh, go towards art and making sure a park in bike lanes are great. Um, I would have like high schools and colleges, you know, work around when it comes to like benches and art wise. Um, but yeah, I do agree that we should have more areas for bikes.
Well, we're on the issue of bikes. I don't know if the city has anything to do with the canal companies. They have to have driving paths along all of our canals. Mo, I mean, most of the canals in town. Why can we not work with the canal companies asphalt those things, those trails? And use them as bike paths? Maybe somebody could approach that?
There, there actually is a big effort underway right now to do exactly that. They have um, within Parks and Rec, um, they're, they are actually working to develop um, the one side of the canal. So it, it's interesting talking uh, um, with uh, Mr. Holmes about the, the bike paths. They are working on making that interconnectivity. You can see them um, at different places around town. And uh, basically that's what they've done. So they, they have reached an agreement with the canal company in town. It doesn't apply to the west side. They haven't been able to reach an agreement on the west side yet. But within town, they have reached an agreement and the canal um, company has identified which side of the canal that they can use for the bike paths. And so if you look out the back of Home Depot, there's that one big asphalt strip. That's part of that program where they actually have been doing that. But part of the agreement with the canal company is they get to decide which side can be used for the path. So that's why there's some bridges and different crossovers. So that effort is underway within town and hopefully it will get expanded out to the west side as well.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree with that. Um, I, and I'm glad they are working more towards that, you know, having more lanes for bikes and around the, through, between the canals. And I think that's definitely something we should work on more and expand that.
All right. Doug, what time are we finishing up? Okay, perfect. Right. Anybody else out here have anything they want to ask?
I'm not very informed on this because I just heard about it like last night, but I was just wondering where you would stand on a, a city. Mandated, I don't know if it'd be mandated recycling program. Cause they mentioned um, that they used to do recycling. And I'm just wondering if that would add to people's utility bill or what it would do. And it, I, I do, I do agree. She says it would be expensive. I agree that would be expensive, but I'm just wondering if you, if, where you would stand on it being required or people being, I don't know how it would work at all. So I'm, I'm, I'm really confused because I only just heard about it. So I was just wondering where you would stand on a program like that.
Um, well, that's an interesting question. I know that uh, the, the recycling was provided by the city in the past and they have uh, quit providing that service because it's not um, cost effective. And, and realistically, I've, I've worked in waste management my whole life. Some things are cost effective to recycle, some things are not. Sometimes people choose to recycle, even though it's more expensive to do that than it is to dispose of in the landfill. A lot of times things that get put in their recycle bin actually end up in the landfill anyway. So there's, it's a very nuanced thing. I, I think people should recycle if that's what they want to do. Certainly with, you know, metals and whatnot, there's, you, there's, you know, it's a resource. So we should be trying to recycle that and you can actually get some money back for recycling your aluminum or copper or whatnot. I don't agree with a mandated recycling program. I think that it should be an optional program and if people would like to recycle, they should recycle. That's kind of where I sit with.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that statement. It's like what you say, you know, um, recycling is great, you know? I think it's, it's nice to dispose things and correctly, but you know, it, it shouldn't have to cost everyone a high expense. If, if, especially if they are not for it, you know? So I would say kind of like what Jared said, make it an optional. If people do want to do that, they can do that, but if not, then they don't have to pay that extra cost.
All right. I would love to ask you a pretty simple question, but sometimes simple questions are the hardest to answer. What one word best describes your leadership style?
Communication. That's a tough one.
The simple questions often are.
Leadership style. Wow, one word. Proactive.
All right. Anybody else before I, yes, come on up?
This question got asked at the mayoral debate last night and I kind of just want to like re-ask it for you guys. Say the city council budget gets tight, um, what programs would you be looking to cut first?
So I haven't done much research about like ti, different type of programs. We definitely need the essential things like police, fire department. So we cannot cut those. Maybe unfortunately, if it comes to that, you know, like the non-essential things like the zoo, while I do care about them. You know, like the zoo and just the non-essential services. I think we should make sure schools are well-funded still. That's my best approach to that.
Well, I had the advantage of listening to that last night, so I got to hear all the answers as well. I agree with the, I think that uh, with, with some of the answers that were given last night. And, and my perspective would be that uh, you know, first of all, we need to look at it, at tightening our purse strings on everything. If, if there is a budget restrictions, we should be looking at where we can save money without having to cut jobs, obviously first, or without having to cut services. So I think that there's, you know, just like in our personal budgets, there's usually some wiggle room where we can trim some things down in certain areas without having to, you know, chop the whole arm off, so to speak. So I think that we should look, first look at um, increasing efficiency within the programs we have to see if we can meet the requirements that we, that we have. Um, and, and get our budget down to whatever we have available to work with. So that's the primary mechanism. I think that, you know, also was brought out is, you know, the way our city work and works and is budgeted. We have a lot of uh, enterprise funded um, organizations, which means that they're self-sufficient, at least if not making a substantial amount of money. You know, that includes power and our cable or the, you know, fiber optic, um, or water or sewer or sanitation. All those services make a surplus of money every year. So we could, you know, it seems to me there's areas where we could um, you know, not with, that we would have to reduce service, but you know, not have rate increases for a while, for example, you know, so we could, you know, work things like that. So I, I think that the city's pretty well off actually as far as the resources we have um, to fund itself and take care of itself. So I think that, you know, first I would work to conserve and then uh, if we had to make cuts, we'd have to put it out there and see what people were most willing to, to sacrifice.
Anybody else?
So I, I was at one of those mayor or mayoral debates and the water came up and metering water came up. And so I wonder what you thought about um, possibly incentivizing citizens or residents to landscape with things that don't require so much water or maybe Parks and Rec re-landscaping areas so that they didn't require quite so much irrigation to keep them in the condition. You know, maybe use more natural or native plants rather than importing plants from other places that need that extra care and extra water. If we could come up with some sort of incentive plan for people to do that rather than metering everybody. Cause that's, in my view, that's sort of like mandating thing is tyranny at that point.
Yes. No, we uh, had the opportunity to talk about metering uh, the last time I was here talking. I'm not a proponent for uh, metering, especially residential. Um, I think that, you know, commercial um, could and bra, and certainly industrial could and probably should be metered. Because especially if they're substantial water users. But uh, a study that came out in twenty fifteen um, said it would be eighty-seven million dollars to install meters on all the residences in Idaho Falls. That works out to about thirty-five hundred bucks a household. So, you know, and, and you know, to be honest, in my discussions with the, with the, some members of the city, you know, they're already planning on metering. So it's already on the horizon and they're already working towards that goal. And that's part of the reason I believe that we're getting our increase in water rates, even though the water is making money. We're still getting a five percent water rate increase this year. They're using that as a, a backdoor way to fund the metering project, in my opinion. I'm sure I'll hear about that, but uh, I don't think that we should meter. So as far as incentivization goes, um, I'm not sure. I think that everybody that you talk to realize that we live in a semi-arid area, so we shouldn't be frivolously using water, you know? And I think that if we educate instead of regulate, we'll get a much better response. If we teach people and show people the best way to do things as opposed to trying to force them to do things, we're going to have a much better response. And I think most citizens want to do what's best, you know, for our community and, and try and conserve water. You know, there's not a lot of people that are out there intentionally wasting water, you know? It's just, you know, I'm sure there's a couple, but you know, most people are not that way. So I think personally, I'm, I put in all rock because I don't like to mow. So all my front yard has the black lava rock on it with different plants and whatnot, and that does use less water. But I could use some help on how to adjust my, my sprinkler timers so that I can optimize that because I'm not an expert. And sometimes I'm sure I drown them and some other times they, you know, I don't turn the water on until they're wilting. You know, I think that's a good idea and I, I think that uh, we should look at that and uh, there might be room for incentivization to go to a more desert style landscaping or use natural landscaping. We did get a lot of feedback from the community when we were going around talking with people, um, especially with respect to the parks and the ballpark, especially where there's been some, you know, sprinkler heads that have been broken for the whole season. So they go out there, you know, and for all summer long, you know, gallons of water has been running off on the road from, you know, from city facilities. And, and, and that definitely should be addressed because I don't think that that's a good thing.
Yeah, um, I'll, I also agree. Um, I don't think it's fair to residents that they have to pay a higher cost and have to have meters around their resident, residential houses. Because you know, it's like what you said, I think we do a pretty good job, you know, managing our water fairly and responsibly. I think, what was it, less than two percent, less than two percent of the amount of water goes towards residents. So I don't think that's a problem. I definitely corporates can um, have meters around there, like what you said. But yeah, I think, I don't think it's fair that we meter uh, residential families' homes.
All right. Day one after you're elected, what is your first priority?
I think it's just to finally, you know, listen to the people. I think that's what a lot of people are frustrated right now. It's just a lack of communication. So I think we just need to start by listening to what people have to say and just, you know, trying to work a plan to, that works with the families and not with out-of-state interest or developers. I think that's the best way to start, just, just listening to the people.
My first priority um, would be to get in. I've, I've already started looking through a Title XI and there's matrices in there that show all the allowable uses and all the zones in the city. And uh, over the last few years, um, city council has approved a lot of changes to those, to that matrix and allowable uses within zones. That has caused and facilitated the rapid growth of the multi-unit apartment buildings that we see throughout the city. So, once I'm elected, before I'm sworn in, I plan on going through that matrix and determining what all the changes have been. And uh, I'm going to propose, I know it, it takes a majority city council, obviously to affect the change there. But I'm going to put forth a proposal and hopefully there'll be someone there to second it and carry it through so that we can get it up for a vote. To adjust that matrix back down to bring us more in line with uh, you know, the traditional small-town feel to reduce the number of multi-unit housings that are being produced within the city and get it back to the way it used to be.
All right. We are getting closer to our time. I want to make sure that nobody feels as if they haven't had the opportunity to ask their question. So if you have a question, now is a great time to just hop up and ask that question. I would love to know uh, what you would do to be someone who promotes unity within the council. Sometimes we hear about bickering and that can get in the way of effective progress. What would you bring to the table in terms of helping to create a really strong team?
I would start by saying, you know, um, is, well, the first step is to work with uh, the people. If, if I were to be elected is to work with city council, not just them, but with the city of Idaho Falls, you know? I think one thing that makes Idaho Falls great is that, you know, we have many people from different backgrounds. And that, you know, either Republican, Democrat, individual, uh, independent, I think we all want the same thing, you know? A fair, affordable homes, you know, great schools, I, I know we don't have much control over that. And you know, fair wage jobs. And I think if we start working together and helping one another, I think that is the first, first step towards progress, real progress. And just, yeah, working with our fam, uh, residential residency.
With respect to city council, um, when we're elected, I, I plan to work closely with all the city council members and the new mayor, whoever that new mayor is. I definitely want to get to know their perspective, get to know their understanding. I appreciate the wisdom for the people that have been on there and I want to hear what their perspective is. Um, I want to provide my perspective and have open communication and do my best to ensure that the residents' wishes are being fulfilled by city council. So I'm going to bring forth what I believe the residents have elected me to, to do. And I'm going to push for that agenda and I'm going to want to hear, of course, their perspective. And I'm going to work to collaborate to reach a decision that's the best for the residents and businesses of Idaho Falls.
And before we get to those closing statements, I want to ask a fun question. You both have indicated you're running because you love Idaho Falls. Let's just say there is someone from our sister city or someone from state government and they come to Idaho Falls. What are you going to show them? What are you most proud of in our city in terms of taking them to a particular destination?
Well, just picking one destination would actually be difficult. There's a, really a lot that I enjoy about Idaho Falls. I think uh, one of the areas that we really enjoy, I mean, we really do enjoy the River Walk. And I know that uh, that has been developed, uh, you know, relatively recently. And, and I am a proponent for the River Walk and extending that even further in, in both directions, on both sides of the river. I definitely enjoy that. I think that's an opportunity to provide that interconnectivity. I think that's an opportunity to provide that interconnectivity and bring the community together in a central location or have access to it. Gives people the opportunity to have a place to go out and recreate. I, I drive along it every day on my way to work and there's always people out there, even six in the morning. They're out there jogging and walking their dogs, you know? So I know everybody enjoys that. So definitely proud of that and as well as many other things. I don't mean to pick just one out because there really are a lot of various things.
James, how about you?
I would say downtown, you know? I think that's kind of my favorite place in the spot because of a lot of the unique local businesses we like get to visit there. And, you know, there's like small movie theaters there and just a lot of different clothing stores and different unique like restaurants there. And I think definitely during Christmas time when they decorate downtown, I think that's really fun. And I would say I would definitely visit there.
All right. Thank you. Well, we want to give both of you an opportunity to share final thoughts of closing statement. So we'll start with you, Jared. Any final message you would like to leave today?
Yes, thank you. In closing, I'd like to say that in a constitutional republic, the voters elect their representatives to enact their will. City government is the closest level of representation to the citizens Idaho Falls and it can have the most dramatic and profound effects on their day-to-day lives. And I think that voter engagement is very critical to that. We've had very poor turnout for voter, for voter, voting in municipal elections. And I think that it's time for people to get out and vote and voice their opinions. Because city council does have a lot of power and they do directly affect your day-to-day lives by the rules that they apply and create. You know, witness the, the high-density housing and traffic problems that have been ushered in by the current city council through Imagine IF. Basically, they could have stopped it at any time, but instead they chose to promote it. It could be reversed by a majority of city council at any time, just through the method that I talked about, by going in and putting in those zoning matrices restrictions that used to be in effect. So that could be reversed. So the citizens Idaho Falls have the opportunity to create change right now by voting the incumbents out of office and by voting in new council members. So I think it's very important that every voter take the time and, and choose wisely and make sure that the people that you're electing really represent what you have in mind, what your desires and ideas are and make sure that what they plan is compatible with what you really want. Because if you, if you keep, you know, doing the same thing, we're going to keep getting the same answer and that's just going to be more apartment buildings. And, and I really don't want to see that. So I think it's time to go back to our traditional small-town feel and our values. And we need to support our local businesses and our local families by putting their needs first. I think it's time for change Idaho Falls, so vote dominant for city council.
Well, I just want to start by saying thank you. Thank you to everyone who helped organize this event on short notice especially. And thank you to you, to everyone here for attending up for tonight. It's not easy putting these things up together, especially short notice. And it's always an honor and privilege to speak with, with you guys here tonight. Right now, a lot of people are struggling. I believe it, it's the duty of city council to work as hard as possible to support our community, to listen, to cooperate with our departments and make decisions that put residents first. Unfortunately, many people today feel like they're being shut out and that the council is more focused on outside interest than on the people who live here and work here. If we're going to make real change, it has to start with by working together. Change doesn't come from one person, it comes from all of us. United with the same goal of making Idaho Falls a place where people can go afford to live, feel heard and feel proud to call home. So, and while I may be young and may not be as experienced as Jim Freeman, I take this job very seriously. I study the issues, I talk to residents, our departments and ask questions because I want to get it right. Most of my experience is from living here. I've had to balance school, work and real-life expenses. So I know what it's like to struggle to afford and rent and manage bills. So if there's one piece of advice I can give you tonight is this, go out and vote. Vote for whoever you believe will work hardest for our community, for honesty, transparency and the people who live here. Because when people, when more people get involved, real change becomes possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for coming out. Thanks to our candidates and I'm going to turn the time over right now to Doug.
Well, thank you, everyone. Let's give him a big hand and let's give Jolene a big hand too for doing it. James, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Jared, you too. And, you know, as I said, you know, we can, we can all throw rocks and everything at candidates and everything. We don't like things, that's fine. It takes a lot to put yourself out, to put yourself out in front of the people and ask these questions. And I'll just say this, if you don't, you know, why aren't you up here? If you're complaining, why not, why aren't you up here? Because it takes action, you've got to become involved to make the change. And you can sit around and grouse on your couch and all that and everything, you know, are you going to grouse and kick your dog maybe or whatever? But if you really want to affect change, you have to get up here. You have to start doing this. And so with that, you know, again, let's give him a, a great big hand. And I want to reach out and I want to just say a special thanks to James. Because of his age and all this, it is, it is in my mind highly, highly important that the younger generations actually get involved and start thinking about themselves, their futures, their children's futures. And how's it going to be? Because they're, they're the ones that are going to have the, in my mind, a lot of the biggest impact and the lasting impact. To be blunt about it, they have more time left on this earth than I do. And so it's very important for them to be able to be involved. And I would encourage you and to keep doing it and your friends and, and doing anything you can to try to get the younger generations involved. And, because I think that is hugely important. And I, and I'll echo the same thing that you both said, basically get out and vote. It's really important. You look at the voting statistics and it's dismally low, but we need to get out and vote, okay? And appreciate that. And just another couple of things. Actually, next week, I'm going to say, you know, next Wednesday, we do have on our weekly town hall, a gentleman that was a January 6 prisoner. Now, we hear, hear a lot about it and this everything and a lot of, a lot of issues. But we, very seldom do we really have an opportunity to listen to somebody that experienced it. And so I would invite you all to come to that. And there's a, a display down there and two weeks from, you know, on November 12th, we're going to have Ben Geeson, he's here. And he's going to talk about the Federal Reserve and the national debt. And what it's about the money, okay? And the truth is, is everything is about politics, power and money. Okay? And it ends up being power, money, politics. Because, because the power and it's, that's what's happening. So you, we need to understand that. And again, I'll just say this, if we want to affect the change, we have to understand those things. We absolutely do. And so I'd encourage you all to come to listen to him. He has a book that he's probably going to try to sell you in a couple of weeks. And we've started reading it, it's a pretty good book, but I encourage you all to come to that one there. So with that, thank you so much for coming to this special event. And again, thank you, James and, and Jared for coming. I'm glad that we were able to give them an opportunity. Especially glad we were able to give James an opportunity because of, you know, a poor working student trying to do all of this stuff, you know, I got to give him a big hand for that. So let's give him a big hand. And thank you, everybody. You go home, be safe and have a great weekend. Thank you so much.